Welcome to the Hanson Select Board Meeting. Tonight is May 9, 2023. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. As per usual, we have a jam-packed agenda this evening, but we are going to deal with it efficiently. Okay, but before we do that, I'm going to defer to Mrs. Green to read the public announcements.
Announcements. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the newly revitalized Cable and Internet Committee and Highway Study Committee. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website, www.hanson-hyphen-ma.gov, or by calling the Select Board's office at 781-293-2131. There will be a special voter registration session held on Wednesday, May 10, 2023, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in the registrar's office at the Town Hall. This will be the last day to register to vote for the May 20, 2023 Annual Town Election. Any citizen may register to vote at the Town Clerk's office during the regular business hours, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., Tuesday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., or Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., by mail and registration or online at www.scc.state.ma.us. Any resident citizen who will be 18 years of age by May 20, 2023 is eligible to register to vote by May 10, 2023. Early voting hours located at Hanson Town Hall, 542 Liberty Street for May 20, 2023 Annual Town Elections are as follows. Monday, May 15, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Tuesday, May 16, 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and Wednesday, May 17, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Upcoming meetings, Select Board, May 23, 2023; Select Board, May 30, 2023.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Mrs. Green. Okay, first up is, we have two appointments. And just kind of to level set, we're going to take things a bit out of order because we have our auditors here this evening and we want to make the best use of their time. So we'll handle the appointments, then we're going to move to the audit, then we'll move to the, I'm sorry, appointments, the presentation of citations for James Hickey, and then we're going to move to the audit and we'll take the rest in order. So with that, first appointment is Cameron King, a Town of Hanson Highway intern. As you will recall, at our last meeting, we agreed to approve this individual, I believe it was South Shore Vocational Technical High School, Ms. Green, right?
He is, let's see.
Are you looking at it right now? Yes, it is. South Shore Regional. Okay, and so we need to, we, Carol Jenkins from Highway had written us a description of the program. It sounded like a win-win, give a young person an opportunity to try their hand at, you know, municipal employment and at a reduced or significantly reduced rate. So I will entertain a motion to appoint Cameron King of 784 Union Street, Duxbury, Mass. as the Town of Hanson Highway intern.
Second.
Did somebody move, who moved it?
I thought Joe did.
Okay, what's happening?
Okay.
So moved. Second.
We're off to a great start here, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. And then vote to appoint John Sidlakis to serve as a member of the Historic Preservation Committee. And John, is that you in the rear? Okay, I'm sorry to make an assumption, but I thought that it was you. So we've looked at your resume, thrilled that you are applying. Historic preservation, we love it. We've, of course, got Kurt Tarvis at the helm and, you know, doing a lot of good work in town, but he needs support. So was there anything you kind of wanted to tell us or let us know about yourself?
Well, last year I did work with the Massachusetts Historic Preservation Corps, and I just love history and I love preservation, and I really want to get back to my community.
All right, that's music to our ears. Did anybody have any questions?
Typical one, any conflicts or anything you need to be aware of or anything?
Okay.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And you'll get a letter from our Town Clerk, and you need to be sworn in before you can participate or vote in any meetings. Mr. Tarvis.
As to the record reflects, the correct board would be Hanson Historical Commission.
Yes.
Just wanted that on the record.
Yes, okay, yes, thank you. It's on, oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, so just for clarity's sake, it's the Historic Commission. We've kind of...
Is it historic or historical?
It's Hanson Historical.
Historical Commission.
Hanson Historical Commission.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know, it took me a minute to pick that one up.
Second. Oh, too early?
No, no, that's good. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great, thanks. Okay, and that brings us to the presentation of the citations for James Hickey. And with us, we have Senator Brady. Senator Brady, I'm sorry that the arrangement is not prime, but I know you're good thinking on your feet, so, okay.
Can you just come up to the table here?
Oh, sure. This is our Inquisition Desk.
Well, I'm honored to be here and honored to represent the Town of Hanson and several other communities in Plymouth and Norfolk County as the State Senator. And before I get into the presentation for Mr. Hickey, I just want to also say that the Senate will be taking up the budget. It came out of ways and means yesterday. There is good news about more local aid and more revenue and so forth. I know, though, that being said, the month of April, there was a little downturn in revenue. So the Senate has put on hold what they're going to do. There's two things going on. There's a tax proposal that has some money for less fortunate people and then also gives tax break to the more wealthier people, and that's still being debated. So that's been put on hold for obvious reasons with the month of April being a downturn. One thing that I'm in support, and I've had a lot of inquisitions about, estate taxes. When people leave their home to their peers, their siblings, they get hit with an estate tax if the value's over $1 million. And right now, even House of Brockton are going for over $1 million, so we're looking to increase that level on that. How much is going to be, 2 million or 3 million? The governor had a 3 million proposal, the House had a 2 million, but we're hashing out all the details, and that'll probably be done after we do the budget. But we are looking forward to passing the budget within the next couple of weeks in the Senate. And then if there's ever a difference, which it always is between the House and the Senate, goes to a conference committee, they work out all the differences, then it goes to the governor if there's any changes, no matter who the governor is, they may veto some things or accept it, and then it comes back for a final vote. But anything that is needed, please don't hesitate to contact my office, or any information you need on that, please don't hesitate to contact my office. But the most important thing I'm here for tonight is to honor Mr. James Hickey, and I'm honored to serve as your Senator and as you as a board of select person member. And this official citation, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby sends its congratulations to James Hickey in your dedicated public service to the Town of Hanson, Mass. as a Select Board Member for six years, recreational recreation commissioner for two years, and as a member of the 200th Anniversary Committee. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate hereby sends its best wishes for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate, Karen Spelker, attested to and a copy therefore transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate, Michael Early, and offered by myself, Senator Mike Brady. So thank you for your service to the community, and anything, please don't hesitate to contact us down the road, so.
Hold on. We don't get famous people here that often, Senator. You weren't ready.
I was doing fine until he walked in, and I'm like, oh.
James Hickey is the most famous hired guest tonight.
That's right.
See, I gotta button the coat, I gotta hide the cut, you know?
Oh, my gosh.
Congratulations. We put in a fancy envelope with cheap tuchet.
Where's our...
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and again, please don't hesitate to contact my office because we still got time to make any adjustments or amendments, and I'm going to be meeting with the Chairman of the Senate President this week, so.
Okay, we'll have our people call your people for sure, Senator.
Thank you.
And I had the privilege of being elected the same year that Mr. Hickey was elected. Mr. Hickey seemed so formal, that Jim was elected. And we've learned a lot together over the last six years, and grown a lot, and it's with my great pleasure that I present this to you. And there's no way to put in a proclamation or a citation all of the things that you've done, so we just hit a couple of high spots. Your swan song, the thing that you will be known by this board for, will be your contribution to that Regional Agreement Committee.
Thank you.
And also, all of the things that you did for the Senior Center. Don't think that they went unnoticed, they didn't, and that legacy will live on. So, and again, the 200th Anniversary, the list could go on and on and on, but we don't want your head to get too big, so we're just going to keep it at that. So anyway, so I'll read you the official. Town of Hanson official citation, be it hereby known to all that the Town of Hanson Select Board takes this means to express its sincerest appreciation to James Hickey, an official recognition of your six years of outstanding service to the Town of Hanson Select Board. The Town of Hanson Select Board wishes to recognize you for your six years to the Select Board in making valuable contributions to the Senior Center and Regional School Agreement Committee on behalf of the Town of Hanson. The Select Board expresses its deepest appreciation for your selfless service to the citizens of Hanson, and thanks you for your many contributions throughout the years. We, the Select Board, sincerely thank you and express our deepest gratitude. We wish you all the best. In testimony whereof, we, the Select Board, sign our names officially this ninth day of May in the year of our Lord, 2023. So, thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Jumping your face.
Oh, and Lynn's a little jokester, turns out. You might not have remembered sitting in the throne that was the backdrop of Robin Hood. So just so everybody at home knows, so town meeting, we had it at the middle school, and it was set up for the play Robin Hood. And Jim has always been our class clown jokester. So he sat up in the throne that was on the stage, and Lynn snapped a pic, and now he's got it forever, so. So anyway.
Lynn Sloan took the picture, she sent it to me.
I didn't know if anybody else wanted to say anything, or it's not like Speak Now if I'll ever hold a piece, because we're going to see you next week, and we know how to get ahold of you where you live, so.
Oh, lose my number. Absolutely.
No, no, we're going to, yeah, we're going to keep that. Anybody else want to have, say anything?
It's been a pleasure to work with you. I mean, it's my first year, but it's been really a learning experience. I've learned a lot from everybody, and especially from Jim. Thank you.
Thanks.
For me, it's going to be unbelievable not having you rattle off all these numbers off the top of your head, percentages that you wouldn't even think you could do. So it's going to be great seeing that, but thank you for your leadership. Everything you've done for the Senior Center, for the seniors in general, the representation there, everything you did for this Regional School Agreement, fantastic. You're a great leader, great, great citizen.
Thanks, Joe, appreciate that.
I'm going to miss you because I was hoping to learn more from you, and I've learned a lot already.
Thank you.
Speech, speech.
No, thank you. I'm not going anywhere. There's actually an open seat on the council at the Senior Center. I'm going to take that seat, and I'm going to be around. It's just that there's been opportunities placed before me, and I want to pursue those opportunities and still be, you know, a vital member of the community and help seniors, so I'm looking forward to what comes in the future.
Yep, we're looking forward to it, too.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. It's hard to pivot on that one and transition. Okay, so that brings us to our audit presentation, and thank you for being patient and good to see you guys back again. And I'm sorry the arrangement is a bit awkward, so if you want to sit here, I mean, I know it does feel a bit like we were you on the night of the 12th, but that's not really what we're trying for, it's just the arrangement, so.
No, this is perfectly fine, thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to present the results of the 2022 audit to you. Kevin Sullivan is with me tonight. Kevin's a senior auditor.
How's it going?
Responsible for coordinating the audit and doing, you know, being responsible for the field work and getting all the audit work done. We're actually out here today doing some preliminary work for the FY23 audit, so I thought it would be good to have Kevin join me. Just like to start off by thanking the town administrator, town accountant, treasurer collector, the rest of the finance team for all the cooperation and assistance that we received during the course of the audit. Everybody was really great about getting us the information that we needed, answering all of our questions and getting back to us on a timely basis, and everybody was very professional, so we really appreciated that. Before I get into the financial highlights, I just wanted to go over some housekeeping items, just some required communications. So our responsibility for the audit is to plan the audit and perform the audit to obtain reasonable but not absolute assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement and are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Management is responsible for the selection and use of accounting policies. The significant accounting policies that were used to prepare the financial statements are in Note 1 of the footnotes to the financial statements. There are no new accounting policies adopted during fiscal 2022, and the application of existing policies was not changed. Accounting estimates are an integral part of the financial statements. They're based on management's knowledge about current and past and current events and also assumptions about future events. The most significant estimates in the financial statements are related to the net pension liability, the net OPEB liability, and depreciation on fixed assets. We reviewed the assumptions and the key factors that went into the estimates, and we found them to be reasonable in relationship to the financial statements. As far as difficulties encountered in performing the audit, I'm happy to report that we had no difficulties in dealing with management while performing the audit. Audit adjustments, our professional standards define an audit adjustment as a proposed correction of the financial statements that, in our judgment, might not have been detected by management except through our auditing procedures. And again, I'm happy to report that there were no such adjustments that were required for the audit. Disagreements with management. Professional standards define a disagreement with management as a matter whether or not resolved to our satisfaction concerning financial accounting, reporting, or auditing matters that could be significant to the financial statements our auditors report. And I'm happy to report that there were no such disagreements with management noted. And then the last thing I wanted to mention was just related to management's consultation with other independent accountants, and it's possible that management may decide to get some other opinions related to auditing and accounting matters, and it's similar to getting a second opinion on a subject. And if that does happen, then the consulting accountant is required to check with us just to make sure that they have all the relevant facts about whatever, you know, they've been asked to look into, and to our knowledge, there's been no such consultations with other auditors. So those are the required communications, and now I'd just like to give you some highlights on the audit. From a results standpoint, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. That's the best you can get, it's a clean opinion, means the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. All the reporting deadlines were met, the information that we received was accurate, and as I mentioned, all the responses to our inquiries were received on a timely basis. We didn't note any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls. We found that the internal controls were functioning, you know, properly in the way that they're designed, and there were no issues related to that. From a timing standpoint, we typically complete our preliminary work around this time of the year. And so we were out this past May for the FY22 preliminary work. We're, you know, just trying to get as much of a head start on the year-end audit work as we can. There's certain things that we cannot at that time, like the federal awards, debt, budget, things like that. And then we come back out in mid-November for our year-end work, and we're wrapping up any loose ends we might have had at that time, completing all of our year-end audit procedures and compiling the financial statements. From a highlights standpoint for financials, free cash totaled 1.5 million at the end of '22, that was available for use in '23, down about 700,000 from the prior year. Fund balance, general fund fund balance totaled 6.2 million. Of that, 1.3 million was committed, 1.1 of that related to special articles that were voted, and those automatically carry forwards the next year if not spent. And another 187,000 of that relates to the school stabilization fund. You also had 1.2 million of fund balance that was assigned, and that's free cash that was voted to fund the next year's budget, so that was to fund the '23 budget. And that left you with unassigned fund balance of 3.8 million, which is about 13% of expenditures. That's a good, healthy fund balance. The rating agencies like to see at least 10%. You're above that threshold, which is good. That includes the general stabilization fund, which totaled 1.4 million, that's pretty much the same as it was at the end of '21. Collections for real estate, personal property tags continue to be very strong. You collected 99% of the commitment, which is excellent. From a budgetary basis, budgetary results, you ended up increasing your general fund fund balance by $377,000. Your revenues came in at 405,000 over budget, and that was mainly related to motor vehicle excise, which was about 285 over. Your expenditures came in about a million under budget, and most significant line items were general government at 289, public safety at 351, and education was 158,000 under. Those increases were offset by free cash that was used to balance the FY22 budget. You voted to use 1.1 million of free cash to balance that budget. There were no appropriations that were overspent at the functional line item level. Budgetary results were strong, they indicate that you have a sound budget process and good budgetary controls in place. Your water enterprise fund, on a budgetary basis, which is how you maintain your books, fund balance totaled $2 million, that was about a 251,000 increase from the prior year. Your rates are set to, you know, cover your operating costs, and the enterprise fund is self-sustaining, doesn't require a general fund subsidy, so that's, that's great. Takes us to the OPEB liability. The prior year, I believe you had put 25,000 in, and FY22, you didn't contribute to the OPEB trust. Like other communities, you ended up recognizing a net investment loss just due to market conditions of $27,000, and that left you with $176,000 in the trust at the end of the year. Your net OPEB liability totaled 16.1 million, that was about a $3 million decrease from the prior year, and the main reason for that decrease was an increase in the discount rate. And where you're not fully funding, your discount rate is really tied to the 20-year AA municipal bond rate, considered to be like the risk-free rate. And until you get enough money in your trust fund, you'll kind of follow that rate. As you get more money, then you'll start working your way up towards a long-term investment rate of return. And that was about a 1.5% increase in the discount rate, decreased the liability for about $3 million, so that discount rate has a huge impact on the OPEB liability and similarly with pension. That is about 1% funded at this point. Net pension liability, you're part of the Plymouth County Retirement Association, the liability with them is $10.4 million at the end of 1231 '21, and that was a decrease of about $2 million from the prior year, and that's mainly due to them having a good year with investments. They're going to be like the other retirement systems, taking a hit in 2022 just due to the market conditions. Plymouth County is about 75% funded, expect that to be going back down next year. And they're using a high discount rate, 7.875%, which is high compared to a lot of the other systems out there. For debt, you didn't issue any new long-term debt during the year. Governmental long-term debt outstanding was 2.3 million, enterprise was 2.4. That debt is about, your debt service is about 1.5% of your appropriations, which is lower than what we typically see. We typically see the debt in the 3 to 5 range, so you have, definitely have some debt capacity there, I would say. And those are the things I wanted to highlight on the financial statements. Next report is the report on federal awards, and that's required for entities that expend more than $750,000 a year on federal funds. The town spent 1.2 million, so you're over that threshold, and the majority of that relates to the coronavirus relief fund program. And that money, the majority of that, was passed through to the regional school, and they're considered to be, for single audit reporting, they're considered to be a subrecipient. And we did have a comment in the report, because there wasn't a formal subrecipient agreement signed, and that's one of the compliance requirements that we have to test for. And so, but something to just watch out for in the future, I know that you don't typically have a lot of federal expenditures, and because of all this COVID money, you know, you've had a single audit the last couple of years now, and you'll have, you know, more going forward for probably the next couple of years until the opera money is expended. And so if you have a subrecipient that you're passing money through to, then you just want to make sure that you have a formal agreement in place. There was strong monitoring of the expenses, we had no issues with what was charged. There was, it was working kind of on a reimbursable basis, where the school would incur the cost and submit the invoices, will all get reviewed for allowability before they get submitted, so there was good monitoring going on. It's really just kind of a formality to make sure that the subrecipient is aware of all the different requirements that there are related to the funds. Otherwise, we were able to issue an unmodified opinion on compliance for the single audit, and we also had no deficiencies in internal controls. And we, yeah, that was really all you need to know about that report. And then the last report is the management letter, and I always like to mention that it's critical in nature, doesn't highlight all the things that you do well. One important thing to know about it is that there's no findings in here that we consider to be significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. These are more just comments to help you improve in areas and strengthen controls. There were three prior year comments, two of those we considered to be fully resolved. They related to the uncollectible receivables for the ambulance, and a significant amount of that was written off in 2022. And you also hired a third-party administrator to help with the billing, collection, and also the write-off, so we're considering that to be resolved. There was another comment recommending that you adopt a fraud prevention policy, and my understanding is that that was formally adopted in February of this year, so we're considering that to be fully resolved. And the last comment related to conducting a fraud risk assessment, and I believe that you're considering, you know, hiring a consultant for that. We do see a lot of our clients hire consultants to do that just because of resource limitations. But that's a comment that we put in all of our clients' management letters, and we just think it's important to understand where the risks are, what controls you have in place, and to, you know, be able to, you know, make a determination on whether you think those controls are sufficient or not. And so that's our presentation.
Okay, great. Did you guys have any questions?
That OPEB thing, just, I know you've told us that a lot of other people are in that same situation, but it just seems like, I don't know, we've got to do better about trying to address it. It seems so, it just becomes more and more insurmountable every year, it's just, you know. It's hard not to feel like that's a very daunting number, and we have 1% towards it.
Yeah, I mean, you've started, which is good, you have the trust set up, and now it's just trying to get on a plan, and, you know, some communities will say, you know, we're going to do X percent of our free cash, or something like that, and they come up with, you know, something that makes sense for them, I mean, each community is different. But to just, you know, be able to start getting money going into it every year, and then you're kind of dollar-cost averaging over time, and even though you'll have ups and downs in the market over time, you'll be ahead of the game. Like I said, then, you know, as you build up more money in the trust, then you start qualifying for a higher discount rate, which is going to lower the liability down. And, you know, we're seeing more and more communities doing it, and, you know, over the last five or 10 years, some of them are starting to develop some pretty significant balances now, just with the compounding of interest and everything in the fund.
Yeah, I think probably you're right, if we just chip away at it, so it's something we should, we definitely need to talk about, it's more than the elephant in the room. Did anybody have any quick, you know, do you have questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
No, well, I wanted to thank you, I thought the one thing I didn't hear at the end was what we need to work on in the upcoming year. But if I recall, when I first got on the board, there used to be five, six, seven things, and you just said it was three, and we took... And you just said it was three and we took care of two of them. And the third one, you tell everybody to do and sometimes do it and sometimes don't. But I don't want to credit the board. I want to credit the people, the employees of the town.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Because I can remember sitting here and it would be six or seven things. You'd come back in the following year, it would be five things. But it was five of those things that were there the year before. So I really want to credit the dis-board and the employees for getting done what needed to be done. So thank you. That's the part of the update that I like to hear.
Okay, yeah, there's definitely good progress made here and there's a lot of work that went into it. And yeah, it's a very good accomplishment to get that stuff resolved and cleaned up.
And this is interesting to me, so if you want to give me a call next year, I will come to that meeting and listen to you guys.
Great.
I love numbers.
We'll plan on that. You could be our, like, ex officio attendee. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I'm just absorbing.
Yep.
Incredibly thorough as always. I really do appreciate you guys going through everything and giving kudos to the employees like Jim was saying. But thank you guys.
Yeah, I mean, it's always, we know that we have good people here, but it's always good to have a third party come in and say, you've got good people here and they're cooperative. Like, it's good to have that validation. So, and it's good to have these results. So we thank you for that. Ms. Green, did you have anything that you wanted to add or ask for?
Oh, just thank you for coming in and presenting all the findings. It's good to hear that Henson is in a good, good position right now, a good, healthy position as far as our auditor is concerned, so.
Thank you.
Shows great work by our employees.
Yep.
All right, thank you so much, guys.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so next up on the agenda is, well, Eric, since we have you here, I think maybe we'll do our FY '23 budget presentation. Do you want to? Then that way you don't have to stick around.
Hey, thank you.
You probably have a few other things to do.
Yeah, a few. But I'm like Jim, I like numbers myself.
Well, you guys can get together and talk about that.
Exactly. So. So I know you had on the agenda, like, kind of like a debriefing.
Yes, I did. We can kind of, we can kind of combine. So one of the things we had was, I would have called it, we call it a post-mortem at my job, but some people get very offended by that. So I just said recap and lesson learned. So I just thought it would be good for us to just kind of discuss, how did we think things went? What could we have done better? Because we could always do things better and this is definitely not taking potshots at anybody. This is more sort of with the mindset of, let's just improve the process and the experience for the next time around. And we've got it, it's going to be here before we know it. Because October, we've got another town meeting, special town meeting. So I think one of the things, and I've talked to Ms. Green about this, one of the things that I really want to make sure that we're doing going forward is really enforcing those deadlines for the articles to be submitted. Because when we don't enforce the deadlines, it all flows downhill to Lynn and Lisa and legal counsel and you and Beth and, you know, and it's like everybody's running around like maniacs and you all make it look so, you know, sort of like flawless to the people sitting in the audience. But I know that there's pandemonium behind the scenes and it's unnecessary pandemonium. So I would really urge that we send out an email, probably in early July with the deadlines, Ms. Green, reinforcing that we absolutely are not making any exceptions to the deadlines. So people need to, I know people are on vacation and everything else, but if people have got warrant articles that they want to submit, that they need to adhere to the deadlines. And what I did like, because I don't want to say it was all a negative process, is I will say, I liked the fact that this board, we didn't have any questions. By the time we got to town meeting, we had discussed every single article. Like, we were like, we had had, and we didn't do it the way that we did it in the years past where it was all jammed into one meeting. It was like, you know, a little here, a little here. Yeah, and it worked out great because we were able to absorb and understand where people were coming from. One thing, there were some disconnects between articles that were submitted and maybe like initially submitted and then they changed and we didn't necessarily capture the change. So there was a bit of running around on that. One of the things that I had suggested to Ms. Green is that, again, in the spirit of, this is a group effort. It does not all have to fall on our office or on us or on Mr. Current Sheriff or anybody. This is a group effort. It's everybody trying to do the right thing. Is, let's take that first pass and draft the town meeting warrant and have the different committees and boards submit the articles and then recirculate it to everybody so that they are reading it and saying, yes, this is what I wanted. Because sometimes, you know, they'll have subsequent meetings or they'll get a different perspective on something and they'll mean to change it or they, maybe they don't have their numbers yet, you know, because they don't have a bid or an estimate or whatever. And so they're just kind of giving us a wild initial, you know, dollar amount. But I really would like multiple QC processes. So, because I think what happens a lot of times, particularly with legal documents that are this size, is you start to see what you want to see because you've been looking at it so long. And so I think we need fresh eyes. Obviously, you and Lynn are ultimately responsible and will always ultimately be responsible. Ms. Green, particularly you, and Lynn, you know, has been extremely helpful. I have to say, Lynn, I was amazed at how much you have picked up in such a short amount of time for somebody that did not come from a municipal background. It was mind-boggling. Kudos, I thought that was great. So those are just my thoughts, but I don't know if anybody had anything else that they wanted to share. Mr. Heel?
No, I just had a couple of things, like if you dive down into, I don't know if we're getting deep into it or not.
Well, if there's specific stuff that isn't like, kind of like going forward that we need to work on, then just mention it to Ms. Green and Ms. McDowell. But if there's more procedural things, then bring it up.
Just the order of the articles. It was mentioned by somebody on the floor about an article being not in the right order and we had to move things around. I don't, that just didn't look, seem right to me.
But, okay, I understand what you're saying, but our legal counsel very clearly got up and said that we were able to have the articles. And just because historically we've always done something in a specific way, does not mean that we are bound to it for the rest of our lives and for everybody else's lives in perpetuity. So I can appreciate that people may cling to, you know, historical practices and the way that things have been. And it may be that the next time that we have that, that we revert back to the way that we did it. But it's our prerogative to decide as a select board whether we want to present things in that same order or not. I think some compelling arguments were made to suggest that perhaps the way that it used to be done, you know, was preferred. But again, there was nothing legally impermissible about what was done. I mean, Kate got right up at town meeting and I think kind of mentioned that, so. Did you have anything else?
No, that's all eight.
Okay, all right, Mr. Weeks?
No, I thought it was, I thought it was a good town meeting, especially for the number of articles that we had. It was actually a relatively short night, considering what it could have been. The ones that you're not 100% sure are going to be the controversial ones always end up being the controversial ones. So that was fun keeping up with that, with that tradition. I don't even know, there were a couple of things, I guess. One was, I mean, there were typos in it, so we have to do a better job, a much better job of just making sure that we just.
Stealing my thunder.
Sorry. So, but that was a, that was a thing. And then I don't even know how you would even correct this, but there were just, to me, there were just so many handouts. And if I was somebody that was just kind of seeing a lot of this stuff for the first time, making it user-friendly, I mean, there were times where I was grabbing, and again, this has nothing to do with anything. I don't even know how you fix this. There were times where I was like, are these the same thing? Are they not the same thing?
No, that's very valid and I think a lot, there were a lot of handouts, yeah.
Yeah, and they were all needed. So that's why I'm saying, like, I don't know how you fix something like that, but.
Can we somehow even just like have it a certain format that we use for the handout? So like the top, it says which article it pertains to?
Or consolidated handout, like a consolid, like, again, I think this speaks to like the preparation time, right? Because I think the reason there were all these separate handouts is because towards the last minute, a lot of the different articles, the proponents of the different articles had like this backup that they were trying to get. But again, if we say, look, the articles are due by this date and then any supplementary material that you're going to give, we need to have by this date, which is totally fair to do. Because I like where you guys are going, like, we need to put ourselves in the shoes of somebody who's coming to town meeting for the first time. Or, you know, like, I'm coming to town meeting for the first time and it should be fairly self-evident, like, what goes with what and what, you know?
Right, well, that's what's going back to Ed, just to piggyback on him, because I do agree with you on this. It's just, just because something's legal and it's fine. Again, I agree with that. For the people that are there for the first time, we have to put ourselves in those shoes and order does matter. And they're not studying it like we're studying it, so.
I have to say something about this. I think we overwhelm people with that information and I wonder if there is a way to get that out before so that people who are paying attention can absorb some of it before. I mean, to go in there and to listen and, you know, I saw, I saw why some people were like, no, this is too much, table it, you know? I can understand it because they didn't have time to absorb it.
And that's another thing, because, you know, when I was on the planning board, there were so many times where we'd have, you know, new zoning proposals or something like that. And it was so much information, because it's not like the zoning requirements are a couple of sentences or paragraphs.
No, they're not.
They're pages long, right? And for the first time, a lot of these people are seeing it. And even if you've done the hearings and the open meetings, you've done everything that you're supposed to do again by law, which is all fine. You have to put yourself in the shoes of a person that's reading this for the first time that has probably no idea, but wants to be informed on the fly. And they're making a decision based on something that they're really just kind of learning for the first time. So maybe the lesson learned would be like, you know, maybe doing fewer zoning things.
I did give that feedback to Mr. Campbell right after the meeting. I said, that was very overwhelming. I found it overwhelming and we had the article, we were looking at the articles for months, you know?
Yeah, but to their credit, I mean, they did everything, they gave enough time.
They followed everything to the letter of the law, but that doesn't, in a sense, really matter. Because if I'm just an average person sitting there, it feels like you're kind of trying to, and this is, I'm not saying anything disparaging, but it seems like, why is there so much information here? Like, are they hiding something? Is there something in here that I need to be aware of? And so, you know, what I did suggest is like, maybe just pare back, just do two or three zoning articles, like, you know, and I know part of it is, Mr. DeFries is excellent and he's taken a look at our zoning articles and he's saying, like, you guys really need to get with the program. You're really behind as compared to other towns around. And so I think they're trying to support Tony who's saying this and so all those articles. But I think we also saw this, I don't remember what town meeting it was, I don't think it was the one just prior to this, I think it was last year, when there was a rash of cannabis-related zoning articles. And people felt very rushed. They were like, this is a lot of information, we can't digest it. Like, what's going on here? Are people trying to hustle us? You know, like, I'm paraphrasing, obviously. But, you know, so I just think that, yes, we've got to do a better job of the summary, telling, like, it's probably all legally fine and I know it is because Kate reviews all of these articles. But again, you've got to put your shoes in somebody, like, I'm not a zoning expert. I don't, if, you know, if they're, I'm going to kind of say like, oh, all right, well, the whole planning board voted for that and the town planner thinks that we need to do it and all of the other land use boards have given an opportunity to comment, but, you know, it just did seem like a lot, yeah.
Yeah, I just, you know, I appreciate the idea of, I just want to reframe it, because I appreciate the idea that people might feel hustled, that's obviously people are going to feel that way.
Yeah.
But for me, it just comes back to, you have a lot of smart people that just want a time to digest it, read it and process it. And I think, like, we need to spend more time educating. So I think moving forward, regardless of what it is, I mean, if we're having these complex articles, I think what we need to do is do what, I forget who we did it with, but we just, even though it's not our jurisdiction, we have them come here and explain it leading up to it.
Oh, we have Frank Malisi and, yeah.
That's it, yeah, yeah. And we should have people come here and explain it, because even if they're not going to a, you know, planning, just pick on them, but if they're not going to a planning board meeting, some people might watch this and then be able to get some information and won't feel so overwhelming. I just feel like you just give as much information as possible.
I like that and I also think, Ms. Green, that this might be an opportunity for like a little cable session, you know, maybe like a quick little roundtable where, for instance, like if we were doing that last town meeting, maybe we would have Frank Malisi and Melissa Panetti and Mr. Campbell and whoever else had like three or four different articles and just have them sort of do a round robin about, you know, in, you know, like 10 sentences or less, what's your article about, that type of thing. I think to Mr. Week's point, the more information you put out there, people learn differently. You know, yes, was it on the website? Yes, maybe we could have done it earlier. Yes, we could talk about it at our meeting, because that's another way people would get information. And then I think, again, that cable, you know, just, and then, again, consolidated handouts. There were a lot of moving parts to that, yes.
I do think that the website is going to be key.
Yes.
We do have to get those warrants, all of them, in order, all the time. We can't let that slip. Because people do go back and look at them, as I found out.
Yep.
You know, so, and that's the best way, I think. People have to be interested, more interested in these articles before they get to the town meeting for them. They have to avail themselves of what we do put out.
Yep.
And let's make more of it available.
Agreed.
Ian is absolutely right. We just spent $70,000 for a new website. This stuff should all be put on there so that if they do need handouts, there won't be so many. The one thing that I took out of the meeting were the number of people there.
Yes.
We were ready to go before 6:30 and we had over 200. And I actually spoke to someone the other day who, I made a comment to her, because she came late and left early, their son had a baseball game and then it was bedtime. You don't have to come and stay for the whole thing. You know, if you can get there for some of it, it's just as important. So no one should think that because they're going to come late or they have to leave early, they can't come.
Well, and kudos to Frank Malisi, who pushed the envelope on us changing the time.
Yes.
I actually think that actually impacted the attendance, that and the soccer field article. But, you know, the change of time meant that some of the people that, you know, have got little guys could come, because it's not, you know, you're not going to be there till the wee hours of the night.
Exactly.
So I did congratulate Mr. Malisi for that, the night of the meeting, but kudos to him on that. Any other, Ms. Green, did you have any things that you wished had gone differently or, you know, any thoughts? I'm sure you've had a lot of time to think about that, so.
Well, I just, I just want to say that, you know, we have our posting requirements and then we have our printing requirements and we're trying to get all the information. When people come to us, like you said, almost last minute with changes in a format and it requires, especially when things are already out to the printers, that's what requires the handouts. So it's very helpful that once everything is to the printers, no changes, because that's what generates those handouts.
Yep.
You know, people out there, again, they like tradition, they like how it was done prior, but coming in and saying, well, this isn't the right format, we need to change it literally three days before town meeting, that's what, that's what creates all these handouts. So every year, it becomes clear what we need to do better. Lynn and I are a good team, so we're already, we've already got the folder created for next year. The shell is already in there for next year. We know the articles that need to be in there every year, so we already are ahead of the game on that. It's just really trying not to bring about additional information or changes once everything is to the printers. Because then that, that decreases the amount of handouts that we have to get out there.
Or even after it's been reviewed by council. Yeah, yeah, just, we're going to have to hold that line. I mean, there's just no other, it's, and I know we've said this, like, pretty much ad nauseam for the last couple of years, but we're really, really going to, because I think we've seen, you know, now October doesn't tend to be as frantic and have now probably called the universe in on us, but, you know, but maybe it's a good time for us to test some of these new things that we want to do, some of the new procedures, so that when we're, you know, when we get to our annual town meeting in May... so that when we're, you know, when we get to our annual town meeting in May, that we're all the wiser. And Mr. Kirsch, it occurred to me, um, probably about five minutes ago, that I did not acknowledge you, and you definitely had feedback that you wanted to give.
Yeah, I, I should stay in my accounting lane, but I can't help it. So, uh, I was just thinking that, just to piggyback on, um, what you guys said, is that, I'm thinking, when they submit the articles initially, you should require an executive summary, like, in plain language, you know, as a requirement for you to consider it. So, plain language summary, and then I was thinking that, um, then the article gets drafted by a certain deadline, and whoever submitted it would get emailed the article, and they'd have to, like, acknowledge it, like, sign off on it, and say, yep, this is what I wanted. And then, from that point, it goes to the printer. So that's kind of what I was thinking. Then I'm thinking as a resident or whatever, I'm thinking, you know, what would be great is if you have a website, you have the articles, and this is Article One, there's a link, you click on it. There's an executive summary there, and then any attachments are right below it.
That's exactly.
Then you go to the next article, Article Two, so if, even if you're on your phone, you can say, and then you can anticipate, what's this article about? And you can start reading the stuff ahead of time. So that's my only.
Yeah, I love it. Does that seem doable? What was just described, huh?
I think we have to see how the website is updated, with changes.
Well, that's what we, yeah.
That can be a question of work.
But that's supposed to be, I, I know that what was, what went wrong is because of the way you had to back everything up and put everything back in. You know, I, I know that that's a, a pain in the neck. But, um, going forward, hopefully, we can design the thing so that it is, and it's supposed to be user-friendly. It's supposed to be easier for people to update. That's the theory, let's see what happens.
That's why they call it theories.
Yes, it's a theory.
All right, well, um, that was somewhat therapeutic. Uh, did anybody have anything else that they wanted to, um, Ms. McDowell, did you have any thoughts that you wanted to share with us?
It was a huge learning experience for me. Um, yeah, deadlines, I think, they need to be greatly enforced. I think that'll help a lot. I also think if people have issues that they feel are not being addressed, they need to come to open session, speak to all of you. I think that makes it easier on our office, if they come here and address it, instead of kind of backdooring us to do it, right?
Okay, yep, both said.
How can we enforce that? I mean, that's.
I think it's up to each one of us to say, please go to our town administrator. They're the ones who are managing the town meeting warrant. Um, so I think it's up to each one of us individually to make sure that we're supporting and enforcing that. Um, okay, awesome. That, um, leads us to, did you have anything you wanted to tell us about budget preparation?
Um, no, um, I kind of, I started in January, so all the budgets were in and stuff, so I've been kind of looking forward to getting on the front end of it, because, you know, it'll be good. And I think we should do some forecasting first initially, so like, say even like, in September or whatever, say, here's a revenue forecast for FY, you know, '25 now. Um, let's, let's look at it. If we have the same budgets, if we brought the same budgets this year as we did last year with this revenue, this is what we look like. And then can kind of just figure it out, and just get it out there, get it digested first, and then you can kind of work to solve the problem as you go. And, because you mentioned, like, you like stuffing bits and pieces instead of all in one. So actually, just like little drips, you know, a little drip in October, November, December, and that way it's not a surprise.
Now, when in your estimation would be the best time for us to start the very difficult conversations we're going to need to have with the school district? Um, because we all know, um, again, another elephant in the room, that, um, what, you know, we were able to do this year is not something we're going to be able to do next year. And so we're looking at budget cuts, or, you know, I, I, I don't know, but there's no rabbits to pull out of a hat here. So, um, and I know we had all said, when we had the three-party meeting in Whitman, with the Whitman Select Board and with the school committee, we had all said at the time, um, that as soon as town meeting was over, we needed to start talking about next year, and I think we meant that sincerely. Um, because we know that this is quite a hill to climb here.
Well, my advice would be, um, that I think, um, we have somebody that was willing to come in and speak to the board about the ed reform. So I think that would be a preface before meeting with them, because then you go in and kind of, like, educate it, and you can run questions and stuff like that. And then you could even mention to the consultant, say, well, what about, we concerned about this? And they can, and that way, when you go in, you say, all right, that doesn't work, and then come in with like a, like a, like a plan.
I love that, what do you guys think?
That's great.
Okay, so can we make that happen? Um, Ms. Green, can we try to make it? I know you guys had a particular person in mind that you thought might be able to address, um, that and, and teach us, um.
I think we're thinking like, too, like, the concern was like the dates, because I think you said, like, um, you wanted, you didn't know what to do at a workshop, make that the only thing on the agenda, or whatever. So if we give this guy dates, and then.
Can we work on that and, and try to aim for June, like, early June, if we're able to? Because quite honestly, once we start getting into the summer, it gets sporadic about people's availability, and probably this person's availability, and, you know, people's attention span doesn't tend to be what it is when the weather is, um, warmer. So, um, so if we could try to aim, if possible, no later than the end of June. Because we need to start having conversations with the school district, and in order to do that, we need to have these conversations.
Do you want to do it during a select board meeting, or do you want to do it as a separate meeting?
How, what's your estimation of how long you think it would take?
Well, I would say, it depends. I'm thinking like, like a half-hour presentation, but I envisioned there'd probably be a lot of questions from board members going back and forth, so that could be like another half-hour, 45 minutes. So that's what I'm thinking.
What do you think about inviting FinCon to this?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, um, and even capital improvement, like, anybody who's got anything. Okay, all right, yeah.
That way everybody has the same information.
Okay, um, okay, so, I know that was a lot to unpack, but.
No, well, actually, I mean, I had, um, years back, I had actually attended, um, a course, it's Mark Abrams.
Yes, yep.
Um, he actually, um, did a presentation, um, I think it was in Waltham, um, the DESI formulas for your minimum, um, contribution, community contribution, the net spending, uh, chapter 70 money. So he went through all the different formulas, and, and all of the different, um, laws, the legal authorities, and it was very, very informative. Um, so I think it'll be very, very helpful to have him come in and sit and, and talk with everybody about the formulas, how, how they, basically how they determine the wealth of a community, then they go into their minimum contributions, then they go into the net spending with chapter 70 money, and then they go into transportation and sped and all of that. So it's very informative. So I think it'll be really helpful for everybody to have him come and, uh.
Okay, Mr. Hickey, do you have?
Oh, I was only going to say, definitely a separate meeting.
Separate meeting, okay, all right. Yeah, I think there probably is a lot to, um, to go through with that.
And when I did talk with him, he did ask, and I didn't know if it was available, so I might as well ask in a public forum, like, he said, was there a study done on Whitman hits, like, on the finances, like, a couple of years ago, or is anything that was available? Because he indicated that he thought there, was there any, was there any deregionalization study?
Yes, there was a deregionalization study.
So if we could get a copy of him beforehand, so he can kind of preface, and kind of read.
Yep, yep.
That's what he was looking for, okay.
Sure, yes, we do have it.
There definitely was a deregionalization study. Okay, that's great. Um, okay, um, so, um.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, that brings us up to accept Joan Menouni's resignation from Zoning Board of Appeals.
I think Sean just stepped out for a moment.
Well, I mean, I will entertain that motion.
So moved, with regret.
With regret, all in favor? Okay, accept James Armstrong's resignation from McQuan School Reuse Committee.
So moved, with regret, second.
All in favor? And on that point, um, one of the things that, at one of our next meetings I'd like to talk about is now that we have, um, finished with the bid process, and we're going to be moving forward with tearing down the building, I'm wondering, this committee was originally formed with the premise of thinking of, how do we reuse that building? We know we're not reusing that building. Um, so I think that we need to think about, um, forming something similar to the, um, High Street Park Committee, which is, okay, um, at some point in the future, that will be a blank slate, and once it is a blank slate, what are we going to do with it? And in my mind, it seems very, um, you know, obvious that we would want to have, um, somebody from the library, somebody from the senior center, somebody from the sports group, uh, Jamison Shaw from Highway, any of the groups that might have anything to do with using that space on this newly-formed committee, so that we can get this cross-pollination of everybody talking about how they want to use that space, and then take it back to the Select Board and talk, and, and we'll, you know, we'll make that decision about what we want to present to town meeting. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, um, and I thank both Joan and Jim, who have served the town for years, so, um, you know, I, I thank them for that. We will be posting this, um, opening, both of these openings, well, not Mr. Armstrong's, because of the, what I just told you, but the Zoning Board of Appeals opening, um, on our next agenda, um, right, um, in our, in our, uh, what do we call it, announcements. Um, and I would encourage anybody who has a desire to, um, contribute to the town in this way, to apply. Um, committee updates. Did anybody have any burning, uh, committee updates? Anything? Okay, great. Uh, one-day liquor licenses, uh, we've got quite a list of them. Um, so business is booming there, up at Camp Quanee, which is amazing. I will entertain a motion to approve the one-day liquor licenses.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Fantastic. Uh, that moves us to approve open session minutes, um, April 11th, April 18th, April 25th, and May 1st. I will entertain that motion.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Ms. Green, that brings us to the Town Administrator Report.
All right, uh, yes, I'm chair, Mr. Vice Chair, members of the board. So, um, I want to circle back around on the McQuan bid process, uh, which we had the bid openings on Thursday, May 4th. Um, we, we did have, um, a, we, we had a lowest bidder, and, um, fortunately, the, the pricing of the demolishing of the school, um, was much less than anticipated. Uh, we thought maybe with going back, um, forward from COVID inflation, that we may be looking at well over a million dollars, and we were surprised, pleasantly surprised to see bids come in under a million dollars. Um, at the, at the, at the moment, um, we, we do have a protest going on, so that has been, that has kind of stopped the process. Um, this, it's in, it's been forwarded to Town Council, um, to, to determine. I haven't been through a protest prior in a procurement, so I don't have an idea of how long it takes, but I don't, I don't anticipate in this taking very long. Um, it's reviewed, and then it does go to the Attorney General's Office for review. Um, and then we will get the, um, we'll, we'll get the information back. And basically, there is, um, in a, in a protest, there has to be a showing that we violated the, um, the procurement laws. So they will review that and then, um, send us a determination, so we're going to wait on that.
So the AG will weigh in on whether we violated procurement laws?
Yes, yes, on that. Um, and, but in the meantime, now that we know, um, what the cost is going to be, um, roughly, we can begin the application process for the Plymouth County ARPA portal.
Yep.
Um, what we need to do, though, and Eric is going to assist, and, um, Jennifer Thompson from Capital Strategic Solutions on coming up with language that will kind of parallel the, the negative economic impact, um, area of the portal. So we have to reason why that building should be eligible for ARPA funds for demolishing. Um, we come up with creative, um, narratives of what we're going, you know, what our thoughts and plans are for, for that property, how it will benefit the community, how it will bring revenue and, and positive economic impact. So we're going to begin that process as we wait for the protest process to, um, work through the system.
Okay.
Um, so that, that's a very good thing. Um, and again, with, um, town meeting, I just want to thank everyone who, um, put all the hours of work in, um, and days of work in to have town meeting come together. And we were fortunate that everything, we finished all the business in one night. So, um, going forward, we know what we need to, need to do to improve, but better things are on the horizon for town meetings. Um, and speaking of that, so a number of, um, articles were approved at town meeting for use of ARPA funds for projects. And in this time, I have moved forward and signed the agreements for the different projects, which would be the Human Resources Services, where we're going to begin to re, review all of our personnel policies, our procedures, our employee manual. Um, they will review it, they will help us, uh, draft the policies so that they're all up to date with labor laws, um, and that they are fashioned to meet Hanson's needs, um, and requirements and expectations. Um, so we're going to move forward with that, that, that's going to begin. Um, and also, too, um, to also piggyback on our town accountant, Eric, when he, uh, talked about our financial forecasting, we're, we're going to begin with John Madden as well for the financial, um, analysis. We're actually going to be meeting with him next Tuesday, the 16th, to begin the process.
And what do you, like, what's the normal turnaround time for that?
Um, he anticipates possibly six months.
Okay.
Maybe even less than that, you know, I mean, it depends on how fast we can get him all the information, and, and Eric is excellent, and, you know, we, we work to get everybody the information as quickly as possible, so we can get the final product. Um, so that's well on its way. Um, then also, too, the bylaw codification process with general code. Um, they have finished their rough draft of the E-code, and it now is in front of, um, Tony and myself for review. Uh, Tony has reviewed the bylaw portion of it, and then I am reviewing all the rest, which is all the general, uh, portion. So basically, there's 161 bylaws that are in this draft to look at, for mainly, um, possible language revisions. Now, it's not changing the substance of the law, it's just changing, um, small language revisions, say, the town of Hanson, we don't have ordinances, we have bylaws. So any, any, the word ordinance that's in there, they're making sure we want to keep ordinance, even though we don't call them an ordinance. So it's just letting them know, yes, take the, take ordinance out, because it's a bylaw and not an ordinance. So it's things like that, um, that I'm going to go through, and then, once that is correct, they take it back, they make all those revisions, and then they start with the substance part of it, which is the legal review. Um, so that's well on its way, too.
And what happens with the newly-passed bylaws? Like, is this organically going to get update, like, we give them the updates, and then they integrate them?
Yes, exactly, yes. Uh, so, uh, Town Clerk Beth Sloan let me know today that she submitted the bylaw changes to the Attorney General's Office, and hopes to have them possibly by early fall. So when we get those back from the Attorney General's Office, they will be submitted to E, uh, general code to incorporate. Um, so it's, it's a, it's a working progress. And also, um, happy to report that our fire department received an earmark of $60,000 for, and that is going to be for, um, so that it can conduct rescue training, and also cardiac screening program, programs. So, you know, thank you to, uh, State Representative Josh Cutler's office, and Senator Brady's office for working on this earmark. Um, that was really, um, exciting to hear they're getting that, our fire department's getting that money. Also, to, um, the Collin Center, as you remember, um, I had applied for a Community Compact grant when I first arrived, um, shortly after April of '21. Um, there, this is, this, uh, Community Compact project has taken a great deal of time because of COVID and all of, um, the backlog, backlog. But finally, they are moving forward that we're going to be having a orientation with the Department Hedge for the Wage Classification Study again on May 16th. So, um, that is finally, getting the train moving is slow, but once it goes, everything really moves forward, of course.
And so just for clarification, what will the Wage and Classification Analysis entail? What will they be looking at?
So what they're going to do now, this is going to focus on department heads, because the town of Hanson had in 2018, they had a classification and wage study for the Administrative Professionals Union. So what they do is they look at the job descriptions, they look at the wages, they, they talk with the department heads about the job descriptions, um, and then they talk with them regarding salary. And then what they do is they do salary surveys with, um, communities that are similarly situated. Um, and they, what they do is they compile all that information, that data, and they present with, to us, they'll present ranges of salaries, you know, are we high, are we low, are we right, steady with all of our surrounding communities? Um, job descriptions will be more detailed and more up to date. Um, and so that is what this final project, product will, um, present. So we'll, we'll have our administrative professionals, and then we'll have our department heads. So we'll have really a clear understanding of where we stand as far as competitive salaries in both areas. Um, and last but not least, I was going to mention that the auditors are in the building with the FY '23 audit. Um, they'll be working with Eric and myself, Treasure Collector's Office, um, to, to, basically, they'll let us know what they need for documents, and then we will work to put those together and submit them on a timely, on a timely basis. And then actually, oh. and submit them on a timely, on a timely basis. And then actually, oh, ARPA. So I just wanted to bring you up to speed for the ARPA, for the finances that we have. So basically, for town meeting, the, the ARPA money that was approved at town meeting for the projects, that comes out of the treasury money, which we already have in-house.
That's the bucket we control.
That's the bucket that we control that can be used for any general government services. So under, with what Eric said, we have approximately, hold on just one moment, based on what was allotted between this May town meeting and the October town meeting, was about $944,000. However, some of those allocations were actually very highly estimated compared to what the quotes actually have come in. So we know we can take almost $400,000 off of that because the quotes that came, the, the amount of money that was allotted was just a speculation of what it was going to cost. So the, the actual quotes have come in almost $100,000 lower. So that is for that bucket of money. And for the Plymouth County portal that we have allocated, and this is the application process, what's allotted to Hanson, which we haven't spent, is 1.961 million. So we, we have quite a bit of money in that, in that bucket that we have not spent any of it yet.
Okay, but can you also lay it up, just for those that might be at home saying, you know, why aren't we spending that money, what the requirements are? Because they're quite stringent.
Yeah, so, so there, there's particular categories that you can use this for. And then within that category, there's subcategories. And so the McQuan, for instance. So our, our hope is to use negative economic impact for that portal. And then underneath that, it has a lot of different subcategories. So to fit this into an application, what we're going to look at is there is a subcategory for the redeveloping, demolishing vacant or abandoned properties and/or creating green space out of that. So we're going to fashion an, a, an application towards that subcategory. But something else that was brought up was that this is a subcategory under another subcategory, which looks at, let's see, how do I word it? I'm going to say groups that have been negatively impacted by COVID, by the pandemic. So you want to say low-income families, seniors, any type of special needs, group homes, things like that. So those areas there. So we, we have to really fashion this very.
Would children be part of the groups?
That's what we're going to look at.
Children, seniors?
Family, young families, yes.
Okay.
Because that's what our hope is, to create a recreational complex, possibly. That, that's some of the talk. But show that we are, what we want to do is create something that the entire community can enjoy and benefit from, and that will, so we'll bring in some revenue to the, to the community as well. So that, that's how we want to fashion. But there's thresholds as far as costs. Now, if it's under $250,000, we have to spend the money first and then apply for reimbursement, which, which can be tricky because if, if you're, the application is rejected, then there's no reimbursement. If it's over $250,000, that's where you apply for, you know, pre-qualification and, and that, that money upfront. So we don't, you don't spend it on a reimbursement type of basis.
So this clearly, the McQuan would clearly be the latter.
Yes.
And the thing about McQuan is we already have approved at town meeting the ability to borrow to do that.
Yes, yes. And unfortunately, we don't have to borrow anymore because it came in under that approved amount.
Right.
So, and I just wanted to keep the board up to date as far as ARPA and where we were on that. And that concludes my town administrator report for today.
Did anybody have any questions?
I thought the original date was 2024 to spend this money, but did that change?
That was true, 2025.
You, you have to at least allot it by December 31 of '24, but then you have until December 31 of '26 to actually spend it.
Okay.
So.
All right, so we're going to get cracking.
Mm-hmm, yes.
We are cracking, but we need to.
We are cracking, we're moving forward.
Yep.
The train is gaining momentum.
Any other questions?
Great report.
Okay, yeah, it was very thorough. That's a lot of, a lot of forward progress on a lot of different fronts. Much appreciated. Okay, well, then, as surprising as it may be, it's, well, I can't even comment on that, that clock actually, because it's wrong.
It is.
7:15.
7:15.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay, great.